...meeting in order. Welcome all of our many, many guests here tonight. We do appreciate y'all being here. We'll start off with a prayer request list. We need to remember Terry Harvill, his brother passed away. Diane Gottzkoff, as her mother passed away. Angel Williams, as her mother passed away. And Ms. Lisa Hembry, as she's recovering from surgery. And as Ms. Morris told me, before our next meeting, everybody will be back in school. So we need to remember all our kids and staff coming back, coming back from the summer holiday, I guess is what you call it. Do we have anything else or anybody else we need to add to this list? If not, we go Lord in prayer. To heaven and father, we thank you for another day of life you've given us. We know we're not promised another day and we're just, we're so thankful for the ones that you do give us and we pray that you'll continue to be with us. We want to pray for this community. We want to always be prayer for our school and thank you for each, because we live in one of the best places in the world and we pray that it stays that way. We want to remember all those on our prayer request list, especially those that have had loved ones pass away with the horrible family, Ms. Gottzkoff, Ms. Williams. We need to remember them especially, that you'll give them a strength and, Father, that only you can give. We've all had loved ones pass away. We know it's hard and we just pray that you'll be with them. We want to pray that you'll be with our kids and our staff and faculty as they all come back for this new year here in a couple of weeks and just pray that you'll keep them safe and that you'll have another good school year in front of them. Most of all, we want to thank you for your son. It's his name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tonight, before we started, there'd be a lot of policy reviews, or policy amendments. So I'm just going to go through those pretty quickly. So just catch me if you have a question. Most of them are first readings anyway, so we'll have a second reading. But we'll go through them pretty quickly. Do we have a motion on the consent items?
Most approved. Second.
Mr. Lewis, Mr. Apple, the second. Any discussion? If not, we'll vote, or in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have our superintendent actions, which are the first of the school year. There's quite a few. Just hopefully everybody's had a chance to look at those. We'll move on to new business A. This is policy amendment 4.600, grading systems. Now, this is a second final reading. Do we have a motion on new business A?
So moved.
Mr. Apple, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Shoulders, any discussion? If not, we'll vote, or in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. New business B. This is policy amendment 2.403, surplus property sales. Do we have a motion on new business B?
Someone?
Mr. Shoulders, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Lewis, any discussion?
Yes, sir. Just real quick, real short. The threshold changes on that from two people to 500, right? What impact does that have? I mean, like anything under $500 then, y'all?
It hit down and we've had some, we wished it a better way. We have sometimes, we have pallets of computers that are pretty good and if we could sell them, we have one school that kind of got us in trouble. We had to back off and give money back and they were doing it to put shoes on kids.
Right.
But it'll sell as a surplus sale. And y'all try to explain that better than I can, but it's got through that procedure. And we've turned around the same thing and sell pallets for $2.50. So now that's just that don't wait, but it won't affect dollar wise.
I get what you're saying and we'll just accumulate X amount of property and it reaches $500.
And but we can, if we were allowed to let the schools have those, like I said, one school did the right, didn't know any better. They got permission, me and, remember last year and I, it was wrong permission, two year ago. And we had to wait and give people money back. They actually took the same thing, we'd been getting about $2 for one, got about $300, $400 and to put shoes on kids and have them lunches and stuff, but we had to give them money back. We're going to get in trouble with the compter.
This, this next, it's, it's the next item? Will that allow us to do that?
Fundraising.
That you can do fundraising for other, well, we'll get to it. Well, I guess I'll ask that question in a minute.
Yeah.
Right now, we're, I'm sorry, we're at new business B. This is the first of two readings.
B or C?
B. Right now.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, that's right.
First of two readings. Did that answer?
It did, yes, thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? If not, we'll vote, or in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. New business C. This is a new policy 2.601 fundraising activities and policy amendment 5.605 staff gifts and solicitations. Do we have a motion on new business C?
So moved.
Mr. Apple, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Shoulders, any discussion? And this was the one that I had the question, would this allow us to sell or does it fall under, would that fall under the surplus sale or could we use that stuff to put shoes if we wanted to do it?
Thank you, Mr. Apple, for the surplus property.
So this, this would be something?
I don't think it's.
You couldn't, you couldn't use that profit for?
I think, I think this is saying you're allowing somebody to come in and raise money for the seven-year-old wall for things.
Okay.
And it shouldn't affect the profit.
You couldn't use, okay. You couldn't fall back on that.
And this is something that they, the compter's office is highly discouraged us from doing anyway, because that, hopefully, we've all got great people and none of this would happen, but that's when you get people in a situation and they get a lot of money and it's not really associated with the school, but then they're raising in the school building. So people think they're helping the board and you got, they caution us against doing that anyway.
And a big part of this policy was for the online, there's a lot of that power, most of the time. But.
So who monitors this director? Like a class wants to raise some money for a field trip. How is that, is there enough policy involved that?
Well, if they raise money before they legally can raise money, they have to get approved by their principal or their sponsor. That principal, they do a preliminary that's checked off and it's, they got to show you once and then you get to having. And then it goes through a process as the money's collected, it's got to be, they can't, they've even got to do an inventory. So if they're selling bottled water, they've got to start with X amount, show the profits, got to match up with it. So it's pretty hard. I mean, you can do whatever, but it's pretty, it's, we've got a pretty good process in place.
It's a pretty good, is it standard same from elementary to FFA?
All the way through.
Everybody's got the same standards?
And then we've changed it a little bit and they don't require it, but we have the right in the expected. Because sometimes I'll get a call and say, well, why don't you let Brian Smith, he's raised $25,000, he's still asking for, and I can pull it back and say, well, no, he's only raised, you know, so, but the answer, it's pretty in depth.
How big a deal is that in the system if you watch this? It was a pretty big deal.
Well, some of them, they'll have a notebook full, like a high school will.
Yeah.
Because they've got, and we generally try to ask them to stay within a couple fundraisers per, years ago, I thought it was a whole policy. I don't, I don't think I've actually found that, but we try to tell them, we like to tour the lab. But now some of them, it's not where they got to fund their programs. And then I know a coach pretty well that used to get around it and he would go to his booster and ask them to do it once he used these two up. So you've got to be, it's hard to, it's hard to control, but now, since we've kind of took control of the boosters too with Norman's law, we've got much better hands on work because that is a lot of money.
Yeah.
And there's a lot of different things that happen.
I see it, yeah.
And then that's just trust the community. But we've got a, I think it'd be hard for us to monitor it much better than it's monitored the way our forms are set up and our policy.
Is it, okay.
I'll be happy to show you.
I would like to say sometime, yeah.
They've got to get permission first.
Yeah.
And they do inventory sheets and profit analysis and all the, it's pretty complicated. Not complicated, but it's pretty in depth.
Yeah, okay, good.
Any more discussion? If not, we'll vote, or in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. New business D. Policy amendment 3.202, emergency preparedness plan. It's also the first of two readings. Do we have a motion on new business D?
So moved.
Mr. Lewis, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Apple, any discussion?
Yes. This is to put A.D.'s in all the schools.
We, they, I checked back in the fall of last year because I didn't, I thought, I didn't even know, to be honest with you, how many we had worked, but we're, we are more and we supersede what the state recommends. We've got one every school now, I understand. They're up to date and so we're in good shape. We've got them, the school nurse assured me that they know where they're at and we've got one ready available, at least one in every school.
Could be.
Any more discussion? Not, we'll vote, or in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. New business E. Policy amendment 4.605, graduation requirements. This is also the first of two readings. Do we have a motion on new business E?
So moved.
Mr. Apple, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Shoulders, any discussion? Not, we'll vote, or in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. New business F. This is policy amendment 4.700, testing programs. This is also the first of two readings. Do we have a motion on new business F?
So moved.
Mr. Shoulders, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. McCade, any discussion? If not, we'll vote, or in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. New business G. This is policy amendment 6.200, attendance. This is the first of two readings as well. Do we have a motion on new business G?
So moved.
Mr. Lewis, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Apple, any discussion? If not, we'll vote, or in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. New business H. This is policy amendment 6.308, bus safety and conduct. This is the first of two readings. Do we have a motion on new business H?
So moved.
Mr. Shoulders, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Taylor, any discussion?
We're going to have, real quick, like it says, parents have a right to look at camera video footage?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Has it not been that way, Brian?
I was going to ask, we always take the position that there are other students on the camera and monitors and they call change, it was one of the changes to affect you a lot of persons and this does a lot for that. We have always maintained this, as in a subpoena from the court, they can argue this because underage children, but now there's procedure that that can't.
Any more discussion? Not, we'll vote, or in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. New business I. Says revision required by TCA cleanup bill policies 5.200, 5.201, and 5.305. It's also the first of two readings. Do we have a motion on new business I?
So moved.
Mr. Taylor, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Lewis, any discussion? Not, we'll vote, or in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. New business J. This is approval of school fees for CES and NMS. Do we have a motion on new business J?
So moved.
Mr. Apple, Mr. Shoulders, with a second? Any discussion? If not, this doesn't involve money, we'll roll call, Mr. Shoulders?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes. New business K. This is a bid approval for copy paper. Do we have a motion on new business K?
So moved.
Mr. Lewis, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Taylor, any discussion?
Is this for the year, Brian, one calendar year?
This would be the school year 1920.
Okay. Yeah, I see that, I'm sorry.
Mm-hmm. Any other questions? If not, we'll roll call, Mr. Shoulders?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes. New business L. This is a bid approval for janitorial supplies. This is also for fiscal year, or school year 1920. Do we have a motion on new business L?
So moved.
Mr. Apple, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Shoulders, any discussion? If not, we'll roll call, Mr. Shoulders?
Yes.
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 Yes. New business M. This is the Smith County Student Disciplinary Hearing Authority, SDHA. Do we have a motion on new business M?
So moved.
Mr. Lewis, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Taylor. And I do want to say that my wife is on this list. This doesn't affect anything financially, but.
It's not, but the question, we've got one on there that may be out on the city, is do we need to look at having an order or can we go ahead with?
You can go ahead with ones that are there.
Okay, good, good.
I was going to go on.
Okay. Any other discussion? If not, we'll vote, or in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. New business N. This is a request permission to sell two school buses by sealed bids. Do we have a motion on new business N?
So moved.
Mr. Shoulders, Mr. Apple, with a second? Any discussion?
How, do you want to have an auction over here or are you online something?
We, what we did, we auctioned for years and it got to be that, that people wouldn't come and bid because they felt like, you know, you're just going to buy it regardless or that and they're, and I'm not saying it happened, but it's pretty easy standing there and say, you take this and I take that and we've done better. And Diane sitting back there, we've about doubled since she came up with the idea of going seal bids. And we've done quite a bit better after we went to seal bids. They're up here and they're confidential and a certain time, so we've done seal bids the last, what, last two years? And they have done about double what they was doing at the auction. And we still are very good buyers, they have been for what they are there.
What are they, Brian?
I think from last year, they brought, was it 25? 22 and 25 somewhere?
23 and 20, close to 25, 20.
That's good. And we was getting them down as low as $700, $800, $900 at one time.
Do we have the right, have we got the right to refuse the bid?
If it's, if it's written that way, it has to be put in the, you know, in the paper and advertised, so.
Can't we do that?
If, if that's something.
Can we do that?
Bid notice I've ever seen you do, you have the right to accept or reject.
I think we do that on all of our.
We've always, we've always taken, I guess, you know, if you're saying you want a floor, you know, and take X amount, so that's something. How would they do that decide or did I decide that or how would you do the floor on?
Ones I've had before, the board decided.
So would they do it now or?
Or they could give you authority.
Yeah.
Yes, sir, if you're open enough for bidding now, you can do it.
Because if you're doing seal bids, would you want to tell what your floor is before you start or?
No, I wasn't.
That's what I'm saying, how would you go about that?
Do it right now and then do the seal.
Yeah, if it's one of those, I mean, if it's one where you have the right that you can open the bids and then if they're all too low, then you just refuse.
Well, what I'm saying, but in the past, we've signed off and give the keys that day. I mean, they'll be, they'll be sitting here waiting. So what I'm saying, if that's something you guys want me to do, I need to know what that and how to go about doing that.
Don't you think it needs to be a minimum on it, Joe and Coach? So let me ask a question.
I bring $2,500, that's good.
Oh, I do too, but I'm just saying, I don't want somebody to get one for $300.
First of all, let me say.
We've never had a bid come in under $1,100 since I've been doing.
Oh, no. I appreciate you being here because we might have questions.
The gentleman that 90% of the time buys our buses has already come and looked at these and I can guarantee you, he's going through their use and it's really hard to get a used bus, people that do it. He will, he will bid what that bus is worth and if he knows there's a bunch of other people bidding, like do it this way, he bids high because he doesn't like anybody else to get those buses. He gets them almost every year. So I would expect these two, give it a nice two grand.
But I guess the answer, Mr. McCade was quite what if he decided to quit bidding, you know?
Yeah. Well, you have a right to reject bids though, correct?
Yeah, but what I'm saying, I don't know what you.
We got to say him, we got to say him.
You'd have to tell me though, Mr. Lewis, what you're rejecting at, what?
Well, let me, let me answer this question and I don't mean for this thing to get drug out or whatever, but it seems like the process that you're using is working. I understand we don't want to just give a school bus or whatever. However, I think if somebody came in here bidding on these buses and they bid $500 on one, you're going to reject it to start with. You know what I mean? I'm just saying, is there something wrong with the process we're using? Do we need to get it convoluted? I mean, do you want us to put a floor on it or?
You could do it a couple of different ways.
All right.
You could have, once the bids are open, Mr. Smith to come back, bring them to you and you accept them or reject them. That's kind of cumbersome. Or you could give it to your transportation director, the authority, to make a decision based on what they thought it was worth and if they feel it's.
In the past, everyone that I've done, they are sitting, they are sitting here, I won't mess to hand them the title and the key. They got a right today and they're sitting here waiting.
They're going to reserve them.
That day, you know, I don't want to do anything to hinder that.
Yeah, yeah. But Mr. Smith, they both know what these things are worth.
Yeah.
And I think we need to leave it there in discretion.
I do too. I don't know how much a school bus is worth.
The only thing is, and I don't have any problem doing that, but you know, you might catch some heat when we've never, you know, we had a car around like $300 went down, I believe, pretty nice car. And, because we've never rejected one, so if we say, hey, they're likely to say, well, you just didn't like me, or you didn't, but.
Well, I mean, if we run into that and it comes for us and here, you can just come right outside, fellas, it's worth more than what they were trying to give us. So we'll let's get beat on it.
With your permission, Miss Diane and I will get together and we'll figure out what we think is an absolute.
And I might just need to prove this in for these two buses. They could be extended another six months, but the rear ends are loose and going to go out and the cost of having them inspected and the cost of doing it is not what a bus is worth. So if somebody offers 11 to 2,000 dollars, it's going to be worth a dozen to get it off the lot out of our hair.
The, these are the Thomases, aren't they?
Yes, the two Thomases.
They think Tommy angry yet.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good thing.
Lasts a long time.
But I think just leave it there in discretion to deal with it, that that be it.
Do they have the Cummins in them, Diane?
Yes, they have the 5.9.
Of what?
Same exact motor that was in the truck you drive before the 67.
Yeah, yeah.
And her people does a fantastic job keeping them managed. I mean, be honest with you, his motors, if somebody wanted to deal with the motors are same thing.
They don't, they go cheap. I mean, I'm just saying.
They're well worth the money for what they are.
They are.
They probably.
Maybe, would you tag me in on that when you get?
Yeah.
If you go bid, I'm not.
Yep, we had, you know, I won't use his name, he won't have it, but young man over here at Cedar Mill, we all know he bought one, I think he was going to put one in a, in a truck. They're very, they're very economical for what they are and the way they've been managed.
Yeah. When is this going to be done by, Brian? What's the deal on it?
I don't know the date.
Because I might throw it out there to some people I know that'd be.
I have a set date, I was ready for permission.
Waiting for permission?
But don't use, don't use the word floor, that's for an auction. If you're going to seal bids, it's got to be reserved.
She has to get permission before she can set a date, so she hasn't set a date, yeah.
Okay.
Once you guys, if you give permission, then we'll get, then we'll write in the paper and, but I'll let y'all know too.
All right.
All right. If there's no more discussion, we'll roll call just in case.
Shoulders?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Motion passes. All right, let's move on to our discussion. This is the annual bullying and harassment school year 18, 19 end of year report.
I think we had 13 bullying cases across the county. I'll see exactly where, which they don't give you an exact percentage, but when we started out, we wouldn't have any and that's not realistic. And our principals and our central offices done a very good job of educating people what bullying is, because then we went full swing the other way. You know, 90% of the calls I'd get on a teacher is that the teacher was bullying them. Tricia, we heard it, we went through that swing. But, but in reality, bullying is an ongoing habitual, it's not a one time, I picked it, you and you picked back. I think, if I'm, we had 13 cases, we had at four different schools. We had one school have two, but they were actually bullying each other. Out of the, out of the 13, we found four to actually be bullying. It could be labeled as that, that the procedures that we, that we dealt with and I wouldn't, I don't necessarily call it punishment, but the, the measures we took felt like at that point they stopped. And we didn't have any pass that initial time. So what we're doing, we feel like it's working. We, we want to encourage people to let us know. When it first started, I thought it was just more work, but I look back when I was in school, I think it's a good thing. I think, who knows where some of this went with kids years ago? We don't want any child in our system to feel, you know, it took me a long time to understand what unsafe meant. Unsafe don't mean I fear for my life all the time. An unsafe environment is somewhere I don't feel comfortable in and I can't learn. And, but, but our numbers are probably more where they need to be at realistically out of 3,000, 1,300 students. And I think we've got good training for people, I think we're recognizing, there's some cases, Uh, there's some cases, I'm sure there are, but, but we hope they'll get reported to us and we encourage that to happen.
I'd be more concerned if you had a zero report.
We did for a while. We knew that wasn't right. And then it went crazy the other way, but we knew zero, you know, wasn't right. So we think this thing's settling more with training and stuff where it needs to be.
Well, it's unfortunate, but I mean, it's something in society now that's going to take place. And that's sad. It doesn't make it right, but we're going to have problems with it.
Well, you, you're going to have it and then.
It's going on with this guy.
But I, but I think it's important too, just to get people to understand what bullying is. Bullying is not just because I flicked you on there in.
Exactly.
One time. If I do that every day and then it's a lot how you feel. I mean, you know, with your background, but it's a lot how your perception of what's going on too.
So what does this involve today on this part? That we're just reviewing it or just?
Yeah, it's just, it's just an annual review that we have.
Your policy proviso, he has to make that.
I have to give you the update each year on how many.
I understand. Is there anything, I mean, let's say a kid want to remain anonymous. Is there any way a kid or a parent, if there's an issue going on and they are, I mean, how would you handle?
We get a lot of anonymous tips, you know, when, and I say that, it's, it's harder to investigate if you don't know sometimes the specifics. You know, if I get an anonymous letter in the mail, most of the time it goes in the trash, but if it's involving a child or specifics, I investigate it. But most of the time, it's, it's, it's hard, you know, if Tucker, I'll use my son, if he's getting bullied, it's kind of hard for me to investigate it if I can't go to the person that's doing it. So he knows, he or she knows she's doing it. But yeah, we, we get a lot of anonymous tips and we get a lot of people that'll call and, and give a principal and develop sort of rapport with somebody that they trust. And that's how we find out a lot of things, but it's hard too in a bullying situation. It's kind of got to go back where it's at, you know what I mean?
So, yeah, I, just in saying this without, I think it, it is a problem sometimes. It really is. I mean, it, it is. That's the society we live in. And I just, I'm concerned about it sometimes.
And, and it's different. Like just coming in, there's a lot of different kinds of bullying. It's not necessarily physical.
Yeah, that's right.
You know, it can be over clothing. It can be over a phone. It can be over shoes. It can be grades. And then that's, but I think that's our staff, the last year or two has really done a good job of identifying. And I think that's through good training and in services.
Yeah. Is that something that you deal with pretty harsh with or have you got something that you go by or?
Well, we've got a guideline and they've got a, they've got a procedure that we've got to be filled out and they all come in to Tricia and then she tallies them and then we go from there, working with the principals, guidance counters, depending on what level of severity is. But you can see here, these have not been, any of it's too much. I'm not trying to, you know, kick it off, but we've not had anything after the first layer that we've not been able to deal with and felt like it got extinguished.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Smith? If not, we'll move on. Over our annual policy review for June. Do we have any questions on our one policy?
Mr. Chairman, the board may know this already, but the reason you had so many amendments this time is that the legislature often uses July first as the implementation dates. If you recall, we can't hold our phones anymore. Come July first. That doesn't change. And that's why you have so many this time because there were changes in the law this last session and they came in to say July first. So that's why you had so many this time.
Thank you, Mr. Winter. No questions about that? Any need for executive session? Okay. The next meeting will be August twentieth, two thousand nineteen, five P.M. We have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Mr. Shoulders, do we have a second? Mr. Apple? All in favor say aye.